We do, okay. We've just gotten a thumbs up. Our Cadillac City Council meeting from December 3rd, 2012 is on the air. It's a little after 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. At this time, ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Okay, Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Melama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spelman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Burnett?
Here. Everybody's here and accounted for. First up would be our agenda. Could we have a motion to approve our agenda, please, as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
(Inaudible)
There's a motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, could we have a roll call on this as well?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. We have an agenda. There's a lot of public here tonight, and we have two public comment periods. One right now and one at the end of the meeting. And it is requested that comment time be limited to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak to us may do so. If you do wish to speak, please give us your name and your address, Mr. McCready.
Michael McCready, 117 Robert Street, Matton, and still proud of it. I'll try to be quick. I have a list of about six things. I wonder about, you know, I just heard that the Cadillac Visitors Bureau spent 20 grand to make Cadillac a wintertime destination. Too bad every snowmobiler in the state thinks that when you come to Cadillac, if you make a mistake, you get a ticket. Might be some way to ease up on that sum. But that is the general consensus in the snowmobile community, apparently. I don't know. Don't ride one. Let's see. I've heard tell that Bill, you'd be a really good mayor if you'd just be a mayor and not do all the other stuff. There was a low voter turnout in the Cadillac districts. Trying to figure out why that happened, but maybe just people are disenfranchised. I figure if anything had really happened, good with the audit. You guys have been shouting it from the rooftops. You need to get Gideon Mitchell a better coat so he can wear them to the county meetings and not quite look so disheveled when he shows up with his Cadillac coat on. Also heard that some of your officers say they wouldn't have been able to solve some of the crimes around town if it wasn't for the Sheriff's Department. Jeez my knees, maybe they are worth a little bit. By God. And then, I don't think I'm ever going to attend a Christmas party in the city of Cadillac. Thank you much. You have a nice evening.
Mr. McCready, thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts with us tonight. Always a pleasure, and to you too. Merry Christmas, I guess is what he was saying. Anyone else wishing from the public to come forward? Now is a good time. We have this period right now at the beginning of our meeting, and as well. And you just got a good example of public comment. And anyone else wishing to come forward, or at least an example? Seeing and hearing no one else move, we're going to close the public comment portion of our hearing, meeting. Sounds like a hearing someday. And proceed to our consent agenda. It looks like we just have our minutes from our November 19th meeting, which was a regular meeting. Could we have a motion on our consent agenda at this point?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Okay. It's ladies' night tonight. We have a motion and support. Any discussion, any irregularities in the minutes for those of you that have read them? Hearing none. Chris, I'd go ahead with a vote, please, if you would.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes, and motion carried. The consent agenda has passed. First up or next up, and we have a great, nice group of folks here, including our Superintendent Joe Spry in the House, Marcia Grace from the Athletic Director's Office. I'm going to miss a few that I can't see. I see Rich Giddens as well from that office, and some of you hiding, which is a good idea, too. But over the last several years, including this year, the Cadillac Viking Varsity Girls' Volleyball Team has been exceptional. They've done it again this year. And we've had a lot of great athletes, a lot of great teams coming through our community. And I don't know what it was about this team, but it finally woke some of us up, and we realized that we should be, and I should be, recognizing your efforts and your coaches' efforts. And we're here to recognize both of those tonight, as this has been an exceptional year for your team again, and your longstanding head coach, who's been flying under the radar for a long time, and shouldn't be because, and sometimes lady sports don't get the attention they should. But for those of us that have been watching, and I hope our facts are right on this proclamation we're going to give tonight, to not only the, our head coach for the Lady Vikings, Michelle Brynes, who's in the House, but also a select group of hard-working individuals that played wonderfully as a team, came down to a quarterfinal game with an outstanding team they were playing against that took them out. But there wasn't, there shouldn't have been any heads hanging. This was an amazing group of kids that played hard and played as a team. They're a good example for our council to work as a team. It's a good example for our community to get together and work together as a team. And this team was unbelievable. They had a player they played against in the last game who was just unbelievable with height and strength and between, they played toe-to-toe with his team, Whitehall. It was something else, and they were equally as good as they were, and probably, maybe would have gone farther because they played, Cadillac had a team effort as opposed to someone who could smash the daylights out of the volleyball at the speed of light, basically. Anyway, I'm going to come around the front, and I've asked our council, I don't think we've ever done this, I know we haven't, in my last six years or my four and a half years I served in the 90s in this room. But this is our city council. We represent our entire city, and we're making a statement tonight on behalf of you young ladies, and your most awesome coach and her support team, her assistant coach who's in the House as well. Is that a Little Brown right there by chance? It's probably the one I saw as a baby on the way to Florida halfway in the middle of nowhere at 5:00 in the morning.
Future volleyball player.
Future volleyball player. And then there's the Brynes kids. I think they swam in my pool. And all I remember was somebody snoring in the back room, taking a nap, and they thought there was a bear in the house. But anyway, we've got some family members here as well tonight. I would like to, if possible, if we can squeeze you ladies up one at a time, if you hear your name called. I'm going to have you come up one at a time. Would council mind meeting me around front here? That's where we're going to. I'm going to read the proclamation from up here. We have one, hopefully, for everybody, and if there's anyone who doesn't get one, we'll make sure to get to you.
(Inaudible)
You're going to stand up here.
(Inaudible)
Think so. (Inaudible) And Coach Brynes. Coach Brynes, would you mind coming up here?
Does one of these, each one? Each one on the team?
Yes.
Okay.
There's the manager here today, is Ally here as well?
No.
Okay. Can we slide down just a little bit? This is Michelle Brynes, for those of you that don't know. Are there three Brynes coaches in the House or just two? Or four?
Four.
Where's number four?
Right over there, two over there, and two here.
Okay.
No, she said Brynes. Oh, they're not really.
Myabel Brynes, as some of us called him, or Mr. Brynes, or Coach Brynes, or Sir. When we played in the 70s, he came from the Flint area and brought his family to Cadillac, which is another good example of families coming here, staying here and enjoying our community. But he put his life into high school football, and has left a great mark on a lot of young men. I was one of the players who was able to play under him, and have great memories doing that. Those were the Kiss years. He's a person responsible. He didn't put his foot down and say, "No, we're about this to come." So he's been in here with the Kiss makeup years ago, and it's been a nice piece of history. Dave Brynes was a great part of that, as well as his kids playing in our school. Now, his son Mike is one of our football players. Mike's wife is Michelle, who stands here. It's a great tradition in Cadillac that has continued on. And I thought really worthy of particular attention, and this is the first time, I think, we've ever done it, and I appreciate council standing by me and helping out tonight. We've done a proclamation, and as I read your name, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, and we'll slide you over there, and you can give the little wave if you want to. But there are some outstanding athletes and coaches in our, in our House tonight. I just, I can't thank them enough for coming down here and accepting these awards. This is our proclamation from the city of Cadillac, and it's in honor of the 2012 Cadillac Viking Varsity Girls Volleyball Team and Coach Brynes with her milestone that she's accomplished recently. Whereas the Cadillac Viking Varsity Volleyball Team's 2012 year was stellar, with a 38-10 and 1 record. They have accomplished, earning the title of Big North Conference Champions, District Champions, and made it to the quarterfinals, as I mentioned. And in the postseason, it was into Whitehall.
Two points.
By two points. I was still cheering on because I was thinking we're going to go to 25, but I'm not quite sure. Rich, who made that roll up. Schwartz from the Lions, I'd like to have that rule changed. I think we would have beaten them had we had a couple more inches to go. What a game, though. Whereas the outstanding athletes that make up this year's team, and they're present, and I hope that we haven't missed anyone. Morgan Kelly, are you here tonight? Morgan, would you mind coming up over? This is Sherry, TI, Doug, and Art, and they're all council members. I'm just a council member with the fancy name Mayor, and actually Art is the Mayor Pro Tem. And they're all quite pleased to have this occur tonight. Hannah Baker, who I see in the front row. Is Bruce in the House? You know this individual, Bruce?
A little bit.
That would be Bruce. Do what?
Niece.
Niece. How about that? No, it's not her cousin. It is his niece, and there's a long string of Bakers that will go through our school and play some excellent sports. Next up, Selena Golnick. Golnick.
(Applause)
Thank you.
Thank you.
Selena is not, his father has the same name as our detective, Todd Golnick, but no relation. Just for those of you and her dads here tonight, so glad to have Todd in the House. Samantha Cole. Congratulations. Good season.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alyssa Fisher. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Danielle Steiver. Congratulations, Danielle. Spend a lot of time with her parents. They were not born and have been time, but longtime Cadillac people. Her dad cuts hair. I almost put him out of business.
So why do you spend time? (Laughter)
Morgan Briggs could not be here tonight, so I want to point her out. Mr. and Mrs. Briggs both work at the school, and she also was an awesome player this year for the team. We'll get her a, one of these proclamations. Mary Marie Baker, captain. Mary Marie had to receive the, are they called kills, Selena? What are they with the overhead smashes? She'd be in the back row, and there was a 6'4", very tall individual with all muscle. That's all right.
It's only me, I'm always tall enough.
She would catch the line drives off of her arms at the end, and one of them hit her wrist and went straight up through the rafters. And you could imagine what her hands, her wrist must have looked like after the game with ice bruises. I don't know how she did it, but it was just some of the things that were obvious that the talent that she has is amazing. That was just one thing I've noticed. I have to know this young lady, her father is in the House, and her little brother is in the House as well, Lexi Addy. Lexi Addy has the most awesome name on it, by the way.
(Inaudible)
Odie, and of course, in a lot of gyms, they would call her Odie.
Yep.
So Lexi Odie. Chad, her father, is in the House tonight, and mom works out of town, probably not here. She's about a big fan, and I'll add all the games. Kaitlyn Agron. Kaitlyn is probably my favorite player, most valuable player. If you haven't seen, some human being fly through the air, she is able to, and she had a signature slam, and I don't know how you ladies knew that she was in the right place all the time, but that was incredible. And a lot of good memories for our fans, all of you, and some of the blocks you folks took in the phase. These ladies have a system. That is unbelievable. And it's attributed to, what am I going to get to next? Team manager Ally Finch was not able to make it here tonight. We'll make sure Ally gets a proclamation as well. She was your team manager this year. And Ally's in what grade?
8th grade.
Forest View?
8th grade.
8th grade.
Your daughter's at Forest View. All right. So Ally's not here. Did I forget anyone? Did I miss anyone? I'm going to get to your assistant coaches here in a second, because I added those. Whereas head coach, Michelle Brynes, here's the exciting news for, for coaches, because to get to the level that she's gotten, it's almost impossible, and over a short period, probably seems like a long time, but she's been doing this 13 years. Whereas head coach, Michelle Brynes, has led the Cadillac Viking Varsity Girls Volleyball Team, improved in her leadership in achieving a career record, 527 wins, 175 losses, and I'm going to assume 31 ties. So over 500 wins in 13 years of service in her career as a head volleyball coach for these ladies and the proceeding. Seven years, again, you've had Big North Conference Champions and District Champions. It is a historic run by you and by your, by your students that are also student athletes. She was also chosen as the 2012 Regional Coach of the Year, and for the past seven seasons, as I have mentioned, Big North Champs, District Champs. Finally, we would like to point out your efforts and thank you, and as it deserves this special recognition, in this proclamation, as a very deserving coach. You have your assistants in the, some of them in the House tonight, and I just wonder if Jen Brown wouldn't mind standing up real quickly for everyone to see. Jen is technically the assistant coach. All right? You've got a couple of what I'll call support coaches. You've probably had more than this, but Sue Pretznow is here. Sue, you might. (Applause) Kelly Boz here tonight?
(Inaudible)
Okay. She's got a school concert tonight, Kelly Boz. Do you have other coaches?
Jane Agron is the 8th grade coach.
I recognize Jane also. Jane, would you stand up? She and. (Applause) James Eddulley also deserves special recognition, and thank you, Jane, for everything you've done for the program. They are the announcers, if you flip to TV 97 and 98 and wonder who's speaking. Jane is one of the two people that are donating their time, Bill Eddulley as well, and have helped get these ladies some exposure and the attention and credit they deserve for their success. Okay.
Karen Lucy.
All right. Karen Lucy, do you mind standing up? My question. (Applause) Thank you. Also noteworthy is the Cadillac Viking Varsity Volleyball Team's dedication to promoting awareness to breast cancer with their annual Thank Pink campaign, which over the years has raised thousands of dollars to further the fight against breast cancer. Thank you for doing that. How much did you get this year?
I don't know.
4,500.
4,500. From one group of gals that kind of went around and sought donations. They'd show up at people's houses. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Cadillac wishes to formally recognize the 2012 Cadillac Viking Varsity Girls Volleyball Team and provide particular recognition to the valuable leadership of head coach, Michelle Brynes, as the Cadillac Viking Varsity Volleyball Coach, who has led this team this year to a season again of 38-10-10-1. Be it further resolved that I, William S. Barnett, Mayor of the City of Cadillac, does hereby convey this special recognition to the 2012 Girls Cadillac Viking Varsity Volleyball Team and to the head coach, Michelle Brynes. Do otherwise wish to thank them for their exceptional achievements on this third day of December 2012, that signed on behalf of the city council, the city of Cadillac, all our citizens, by name is William S. Barnett, Mayor of the City of Cad. Michelle, would you like to say a thing? Congratulations.
I'd just like to thank Mayor Barnett and the city council for recognizing us. We're very honored. This has never happened before, so when Marcia called me the other day and let me know, I was just kind of floored and very excited to tell my team. And very blessed to coach such wonderful young ladies this year and every year. You know, we have great kids. They're great. They're great examples for our school, our community, and I think they do a great job of representing Cadillac, school, and community, and our team and our program. And they're a great example of what we strive for every year. And I can't thank you enough for bringing extra recognition to them because they do put extra work and effort in. And also thank my coaches, because obviously I don't do all of this by myself. So I'd like to thank them, and in a support of the Athletic Office, Marcia and Rich, the Superintendent Joe Spry, our Principal Todd Bragman, Jen Bragman, I mean, Chad. (Laughter) Jen Brown, sorry, ma'am. Anyway, in wrapping up, thank you very much.
Sorry, Chad.
Yeah, I know. Thank you to everybody and all of our supporters, our parents, and the community, and especially for you for recognizing us. This is a great honor for us, and we really appreciate it.
Not a problem. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mary Marie, did you want to say a thing as team captain on behalf of your players?
Yes, I would. I would. I would just like to thank Ms. Spry, because she puts a lot of effort in, and that helps us win and be successful. And I'd like to thank my parents, because they do a lot.
I see Morgan Kelly's mom's back there. I didn't catch her. Mrs. Baker's here tonight, and also Kelly, you?
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Kelly.
Kelly's also here. Hey, Matt Tor. Okay. Anything else you'd like?
No.
I think we're, congratulations. I think the first time this year. For 500 wins. I'm sorry we took so long to get you here, but it is amazing.
Good job.
Ladies, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything.
Thank you very much.
(Applause)
I got some good pictures. Had to turn the phone back on for a minute, though.
Yeah, what?
Had to turn the phone on for a minute. I turned it on.
Thank you. I should have asked each of you something, but whatever. Okay. Thank you. That's actually our time.
(Inaudible)
Lexi had just done the same thing. And it was.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Okay, we're going to try to let the crowd leave and get out of the building.
Exit stage left.
Okay.
Mr. Philkins is here, okay.
Marcus, do we have any public hearings for tonight?
No, we don't.
Do we have any communications, Chris?
No.
Do we have any appointments, Chris?
No, we don't.
All right. Well, that brings us down to Community Spotlight. Mr. Philkins is in the House tonight. Hello, Mike. And he is representing the Cadillac Area Arts Council, excuse me, Cadillac Arts Council. Maybe, I'm just following the notes here. Can you maybe give us your formal name, Mike, when you get a chance up there? All right.
You have to follow that. That's how we spell it.
Thank you. You don't get one.
Yes, we should.
Okay, good evening. I'm Mike Philkins, and I'm the President of the Cadillac Arts Council, and I have been serving as the President since January of 2006. I have notes here so that I stay succinct. What I gave you was, first of all, just the actual budget report for the year, which is the bottom sheet. There's a sheet there that shows what and how we spent funds during the summer of 2012 in the Arts Council, puts on the Festival of the Arts. And those expenditures are consistently representative of what it requires in the way of funding for that particular activity. And then the top sheet is something that people don't very often see or observe, and that's, we get requests each year from member groups. The Arts Council is made up of the Cadillac Philharmonic Club, which is just starting its 55th year in existence, Gopher Wood, Footlighters, which will be starting its 50th season, Cadillac Area Artists Association, Wexford County Historical Society, the Clam Lake Band, which has been around for 38 years, Northern Michigan Artist Guild, The Garden Club, Friends of the Library, the Cadillac Symphony, which has been around for about 40 years, Cadillac String Association, and the Cadillac Community Chorus. Those groups have the opportunity each fall to request a grant from the $10,500 that's allotted from the city council each year to the, to the Arts Council. What you can see is a trend. These nice color things, by the way, were not done by me. Somebody that actually enjoys working with numbers prepared this for me. And you can see that what we gave in 2011, and it represented about half of what the city presents us, with the other half going to our education programs. We pay about $1,500 a year for artists in residence, opportunities in the school, guest artists, workshops, so on and so forth. And then, of course, as you can see, the Festival of the Arts expenses. In 2012, we tracked what people asked for. They requested 65% of the city fund allotment, and we actually gave out 44.5%. And then this year, last, last week as a matter of fact, we received requests for 82% of that $10,500, and we reduced that by 35% every, each item that somebody asked for in terms of support for their programs. Now, we, we do track what people spend the money on. You know, I could tell you that we provide perhaps money for one of the Gopher Wood Shows. We pay for royalties for one or two Footlighters productions. So people apply to us and identify the types of programs, and this is actually a change from the way we used to do things, and the reason was they thought it would be a little bit easier for the city and the city council to review if we actually funded specific programs, rather than just saying, "Oh, you want 500 bucks? Okay, here's $500," and we don't necessarily know what it's spent on. We pay about fifteen hundred dollars a year for artists in residence, opportunities in the school, guest artists, workshops, so on and so forth. And then, of course, as you can see, the Festival of the Arts expenses. In two thousand and twelve, we tracked what people asked for. They requested sixty-five percent of the city fund allotment and we actually gave out forty-four and a half percent. And then this year, last week as a matter of fact, we received requests for eighty-two percent of that ten thousand five hundred and we reduced that by thirty-five percent every, each item that somebody asked for in terms of support for their programs. Now, we do track what people spend the money on. You know, I could tell you that we provide perhaps money for one of the Gopher Wood shows. We pay for royalties for one or two Footlighters productions. So people apply to us and identify the types of programs. And this is actually a change from the way we used to do things. And the reason was I thought it would be a little bit easier for the city and the City Council to review if we actually funded specific programs rather than just saying, oh, you want five hundred bucks? Okay, here's five hundred dollars. And we don't necessarily know what it's spent on. I will note that the Arts Council, which was founded not actually originally with city money, but with money from the state of Michigan's, Michigan Council for, on the arts and cultural affairs. And they had some special grants to encourage rural communities to form arts councils, get more involved in nurturing the arts in their communities. And as with many state grants in the arts, about thirteen years ago, the level of money available in the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs was around twenty-eight million. And right now it sits around one point one million. So it's been reduced. And as a result, some of these rural arts grants and so on are not available anymore. And so it has been nice that the City of Cadillac has continued to provide that funding, even though it's long since they stopped receiving the rural arts grant. The city has continued to maintain providing money. This year, we're actually on paper facing a shortfall of four thousand fifty dollars. And we have budgeted to not spend more than we make. But based on the requests that people have made, and in addition to that, we moved a thousand dollars from the entertainment budget for the Festival of the Arts into the grants in order to provide people with more of what they were hoping to get in the way of support. And the reason we were able to move that thousand dollars without losing anything in entertainment is because we found somebody from Germany to play for free on Friday night. And so we didn't have to spend that thousand dollars. So we moved it over to grants so that we didn't have to cut back on the grants that we were providing for people. Sometimes people inquire as to why the Arts Council itself does not do fundraising. And the unique nature of our organization with all those member groups, if we did fundraising, we'd be bumping heads with our own members for dollars and resources that are available in the community. So we do not do fundraising. We do write some grants. We, I think we get grants every year to help our education program. We receive those from Rotary, from the Community Foundation and so forth. So we're, on paper, four thousand fifty dollars short going into two thousand and thirteen. And so if people have some thoughts about how we can help the member organizations that you see listed here to perhaps find that thirty-five percent that we eliminated from their funding requests somewhere else, that would be wonderful because we believe that we have a wonderful arts community in Cadillac, far beyond, I think, what people even realize in terms of the amount of artistic talent that lives in the Cadillac, in the greater Cadillac area. So, any questions from any of you? Yes?
I just had a quick question. With respect to the Friends of the Library, and you may not even know this, I know that they're looking again at perhaps bringing in the Seward Sculpture Exhibit. Is that what their request is related to? Do you guys know?
We have representatives from the...
I'm Vicki Essing-Macher.
Vicki, would you mind coming forward to speak? I'm sorry if I wouldn't mind the folks on TV.
Microphone.
That way people back in TV land can hear you.
If it helps us get money, I'll do it. No, we requested a thousand dollars this year and that was to go towards a fund. We had made a promise to the community that we were going to have a sculpture fund and to buy a sculpture in the future for Cadillac to stay. Now, we have money towards that, but nowhere near what we need. And when that time comes, when we choose and we have enough funds, then we will purchase one, but that money was...
What might be the ballpark if you know by chance?
We don't know. I mean, we're not talking about Seward Johnson sculpture because those range from eight, eighty-five thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. I'm thinking maybe twenty, thirty thousand, we can find a sculpture that will be good. But that's what my, our cost was.
Thank you, Vicki. So the question was, is that...
I was just looking at how the different organizations are, if you will, working through the Arts Council for some subsidy. I was just curious, knowing that the Friends of the Library is again looking at perhaps bringing the traveling sculpture exhibit back to Cadillac. I was curious if that was what that line item was for, so.
Okay. Again, for those who just joined us, this is a Community Spotlight and I didn't announce that very well, but you've been spotlighting, Mr. Philkins, the funding difficulties at the Cadillac area, I thought, is it area or just Arts Council?
It's, we changed the name a few years ago to Cadillac Arts Council.
Okay. Thank you for getting me back up to speed.
Less words.
All right. It is less words. I've had a few folks over the years come to me and say, why are you cutting the funding to the arts programs, the city? And I didn't think we were, but what are the pressures that you're receiving that are making you not meet what would be usually maybe formerly the amounts? There probably are the same pressures that are out everywhere else with inflation and so forth, but is there a different approach from the council or?
Okay.
What's that?
As I said, the city has not cut or reduced funding ever. It's been ten-five.
That's what I thought.
Continuously.
Go ahead.
And in the bulk section of the budget, which represents culture and recreation, in that portion of the budget, I was mentioning to Mr. Petcha the other day that I was well aware of the fact that that total budget has been reduced by almost a hundred thousand dollars from three hundred ninety thousand to about two hundred ninety thousand over the last five or six years. And the portion that's allotted to the Arts Council wasn't reduced during that period. So if anything, you know, the city has willfully stood fast to maintain it. The problem is that our member organizations are struggling with their fundraising efforts, patron drives are way down, so on and so forth. The Cadillac Community Chorus, you notice, just pops up in two thousand and thirteen for the first time asking for money. They're a fledgling organization, especially compared to the orchestra's been around for forty years, they've only been around for three years. And they've gotten to a point where the members just don't feel, you know, the members are paying dues to belong to the orchestra and they're buying music out of their own pockets. And they're just trying to find some way of getting a little bit more, you know, wind underneath them to keep them going.
Do you know, I tried to raise money with the TV Two and Ninety Eight Board at the time with the township governments and it was absolutely not productive. I would assume that you've tried that and that's something that's not been in their budgets or?
If it wasn't in the budget twenty years ago, as you guys know, nobody's putting in anything new into their budgets unless they're forced to by ordinance or whatever.
Can I say something?
Sure.
As Gopher Wood? One of the groups is Gopher Wood Concerts and I'm the president of Gopher Wood Concerts. And what we've been seeing, the trend the last couple of years, is we get a grant from the Arts Council to help support our costs of bringing world-class artists once a month between September and May to the city. Our shows are always open to the public up at the Yalz, too, is my little commercial. But what we've been seeing is that attendance has dropped and the cost of artists with, because these are traveling musicians, increases because of the cost of travel increasing. So costs are rising and participation is decreasing. People don't have, you know, that, you know, when you're making cuts in your household budget, that's one of the things that we're seeing cut. And that's across, that's not just in Cadillac, but that's across our state with other organizations that do the same thing that we do here. So ways that the community can support the Arts Council and the member groups is by attending their events. Attend the symphony. It's a small price. I mean, none of these groups that have events are even comparable to similar events like in Traverse City, for example. The ticket price for all of the things here, there are folks that drive up to Traverse for a concert or for the Sweet Adelines or Community Choir. And just to get people out to go to these things, it's, I've heard so many positive comments about the symphonies, winter concert, people that had never gone that went for the first time and loved it. So it's important as a community that we not just support the arts through funding from the city, but we as citizens support the arts with our patronage.
Are you part of the Artists Association, too? Is that part of the Arts Council? How does that?
The Cadillac Area Artists Association is a very important member group. And I say important because they run the Art Fair, which anchors the Festival of the Arts. And they do that independent of what we do as an Arts Council.
Are you asking the city to consider increasing the grant that has never been increased?
In the interest of appropriateness, Mr. Petcha had mentioned to me that Community Spotlight was not the time for asking for funding increases. However...
Since you asked.
Since you asked. As I said, right now we're facing a four thousand fifty dollar shortfall if we give everybody everything that they indicated that they needed from us. And I don't mind giving you that as a figure, you know, to, as you're working on budgets throughout the winter and the spring, to consider the fact that we have greater needs because of, you know, things that TI has mentioned, things I've mentioned that I'm sure the organizations would appreciate any support that you wanted to provide.
Does that benefit our community above and beyond the organizations themselves financially and just life, life stead, quality of life issues, things like that for?
Yeah, I think specifically our focus, because it's City of Cadillac funds, is to improve the quality of life within the community itself. I do think that a lot of the member groups hold activities, and we include the Festival of the Arts as well, that attract people from outside of the community to come here. And in many cases, they, it's a late night, they stay overnight. So I think it does, there is a general benefit from the investment that the city makes in bringing people to the community in addition to just improving the quality of life for the citizens.
How many years, Mike, has it been for the ten thousand five?
Um, we were...
Over twenty?
You know, well, I looked at the archives and they don't go back very far that are on the internet. Linda Anderson served on the Arts Council in nineteen ninety-one and she knew it was ten-five then.
Okay. Anything else for us on the Community Spotlight, all positive and no money requests or like that? Thanks, Marcus.
You're welcome.
Anything from council for Mr. Philkins? Or actually, there's other arts groups here and did you want to introduce your folks you had in the house?
We have some people from the Friends of the Library who are sneaking out the back door even as we speak.
Before they, before they leave, could we make a statement?
I got a question, too, about for them. Would you like to do the same question?
I don't know if it's a question or not, but I do want to let the Friends of the Library know, especially this summer, the public comments that were made and comments at our meetings by the council afterwards. You didn't get a chance to hear them all. You did come at the beginning when you had your request for the sculptures, but amazing is that all we can say of the impact that it had. And you, we could have put together all of the comments that were made throughout the year. A lot of them were crediting your organization for what an amazing impact that it had in our community this summer. I think it over exceeded everybody's expectations and a lot of people came to Cadillac. So thank you.
My question, I heard there's a book out. Is there a book available with the statutes and the story about this summer?
At photo one, she has put together a photo album of the sculptures in Cadillac and is for sale through her and she will donate five dollars per book sold to Friends of the Library Sculpture Club.
Okay. Photo one.
Good Christmas present.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you so much as well on behalf of council and appreciate what you've done. Anyone else? Mike?
Rebecca Klein from the Cadillac String Association is here. She also teaches orchestra at the school, for those of you that haven't met her yet. And I see Sue Malama in the back, who is a longstanding member of the Cadillac Arts Council.
And she's going to twist Mr. Malama's hand or arm or?
Or something.
Neck for funding? I think that's not a conflict.
I believe, isn't this your, you're an outgoing president of the Arts Council, is it?
Yeah. According to the bylaws of the Arts Council, I've already technically overstayed my welcome. So I've served for more years than you're allowed to.
I would just like to, on behalf of myself personally and I imagine this body as well, thank you for your service to that group. You've done one heck of a job.
Pleasure.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else you wanted to introduce? Mike?
You know, since Joe Spry is sitting here, I do want to mention that in-kind contributions from Cadillac Area Public Schools over the years to the arts is staggering. Free rehearsal facilities for the symphony and the city band, you know, back when First Night was going on, all the background assistance that the schools provided. I know that Joe wasn't here, but she represents the schools and it's beyond description how much the Cadillac Area Public Schools has supported the arts programs over the years.
It has.
They have.
Good job.
I just wanted to throw one other, more of a statement. I was shocked on how, how much do you guys do at the Arts Festival on such a tight budget? Because that event ends up just being a great weekend for the community and the benefit that the community receives in relation to the, your budget is pretty impressive. I would have thought it would have been a lot higher for the quality of the program.
Thank you.
All right. Next concert is when? January?
Next which concert?
Gopher Wood Concerts, January eighteenth or nineteenth.
Symphony? You're also the symphony director, are you not?
Oh, yes, I am. The last Sunday in February.
Mike, where's the, so do we pay the expenses for the art festival? Do you pay the expenses for that?
Yeah, that comes from that.
Where's the income?
There's, there's actually not any income on the Arts Council side. The Art Fair, run by the Cadillac Area Artists Association, was, they came first. They're about two years older than the Festival of the Arts and they invited the Arts Council to join in, add entertainment and those things. So we only spend money. We don't have any way, we can't charge, you know, for people. The concerts we give away for free and so forth. So all the income goes to the Cadillac Area Artists Association.
Everything's covered in the artists in the booths that are, okay.
The vendors in the tents do pay for that space and that basically does cover the cost of the tents. Everything else is because you guys continue to provide us with funding.
Okay. You're not going to do the party dance to get out of here or?
Do I have to dance? I fell off a ladder yesterday, so I'm a little sore, but I'd rather not dance.
We'll spare you. Thank you for coming down and sharing your positive news and I'm sure the council and/or the city staff will consider your non-request tonight for additional funding.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. And thank you all that have come tonight that are interested in arts and have supported it. Joe, if you stick around long enough, you're going to be on the public comment at the end.
That's my exit.
Thanks for coming. You're welcome to stay.
Do I have to comment?
No.
I think you're good. You don't have to. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much for recognizing our girls and our coaches.
You're very welcome. They deserve it.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Philkins, for the Community Spotlight. Is that something we could sharpen our pencils on, Marcus? And so we haven't, and maybe help them by talking to other area governments. I know Herring Township's donated money before for Cadillac events and these really transcend city limits anyway and are bringing in a lot of, I think the townships benefit in some way, at least the four closest ones. Maybe we could get ahold of them and work up a plan to come up with the deficit funding necessary to keep them going in a good direction.
I was going to ask the superintendent if she wanted to split the...
I was going to ask the superintendent if she wanted to split the difference before you left.
That's why she left. Yeah, that's right. Ask the schools because they're just rolling in dough these days.
No, that's a good idea. Just wanted to mention, and Mr. Philkins mentioned it himself as well, that the fund in which those dollars do come out of has seen, you know, a six-figure reduction over the last few years, whereas our contribution has remained, remained the same. But I think certainly looking at some outside groups to try to help make up the difference could be, could be beneficial.
I assume we have a contract with them of some sort that they're going to provide arts and crafts and entertainment to the community in exchange for our tax dollars? I know it...
I believe it's part of the, and I would have to double check, but I do believe it's part of the Arts Council enabling legislation.
All right.
Not 100% of it.
Okay. Thank you and thanks for bearing with us with our Community Spotlights tonight, which have been significant. And Judy's been patient. Marcus, why don't you and Mike, who's here as well from the Housing Commission. But Marcus, it does look like you're up next with the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Mr. Mayor, as you just mentioned, Judy Myers and Mike Pollan are here for an item with respect to a compensation change for Housing Commission full-time employees. The council packet includes documentation that the city received with respect to their request of providing a $1,500 bonus to all full-time employees for fiscal year 2012 in consideration of a variety of costing... Measures throughout the year. Well, it hasn't done that in a while, has it?
We talked about spending money, I think.
We all need hearing aids now. I'm not sure, Mr. Pollan or Judy, if you wanted to mention anything else?
Nope, I don't have anything else. Judy Myers, Director of Housing, Commission 111, South Simons, Kirtland Terrace. And you have the backup in front of you. We're requesting a one-time only bonus to our employees and our Personnel Committee suggested it and brought it before the full board and they passed a resolution to approve it.
How many employees do you have, Judy?
Full-time, I have five, including myself.
I was going to comment, I know I, which this puts a little note to myself to get back on this, but we were talking about an incentive program at the city as a way to, in a similar way. So it was really nice to see an example of that and how, how much savings can come from it. So I'm going to definitely include this when I finish the study, I'll include this information in it. But that's really exciting to see that big, 50,000 it looks like, or maybe 57,000 in savings.
It is, uh-huh. And this is an approximate number. This is my own spreadsheet here. This isn't our official financials. But I do believe that you get our annual audit every year. We haven't had the 12 yet. It will be coming in the spring, but we're, we're fine. We're going to be sitting good. And I challenged the employees at the beginning of the year to come up with these measures and they have just done great. We're very, very proud of them.
Is this one-time bonus in lieu of an increase this year or did they also get a salary increase?
They got a very small increase. When I came before you, I think at the beginning of January, it was a 1.5%. So it didn't even meet COLA.
It looks like it's a combination of, these are the employees bringing forward from their experience, ways that they could be saving money. And it sounded like you announced the program at the beginning. So the, if you could continue with that, that's a great double win situation.
Well, we started talking about this in the very early spring and came to the conclusion that some of these things cannot be reproduced, but for this year, they're, they're good savings.
Awesome. Thanks for doing that. It's a good example for other governments to follow.
Was one of the most difficult ones, the change in health plans?
Um, no. It didn't cause that much of a hurdle. We, we went through that pretty smoothly.
And I'm just saying...
We have pretty healthy people.
For people who don't have this, it looks like you're saving $14,700 a year by doing that.
The Housing Commission is. However, I might add that in that figure right there, we had two retirees that were being covered until this past month and they both reached Medicare age and we no longer cover them. So this isn't all on, on my employees. That was a pretty hefty chunk.
Historic or past expenses? There's a name for that. It's eluding me.
It's also interesting how one of the savings is, few of the savings are to do the work, to not outsource the work. And that's such a cry to privatize and outsource to save money when it looks like doing the job in-house is actually saving money. Nice to see.
Unfortunately, it's a hit on some of our local small businesses because we are doing our own plumbing projects and maybe our own landscaping and our irrigation systems, anything that doesn't require a license.
I see that, but you did all the laundry tubs.
We're in the process of that. We're, we're doing that right now.
Good. Okay. Any further discussion on the question of approving a compensation change for the Housing Commission? Hearing none. Could we please have a motion from one of our Council members or the Mayor pro temp?
I'll make a motion that we approve the compensation change for the Housing Commission as presented.
Support.
There's a motion and there's support from my left. Any discussion? Any, hearing none. Chris, could you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried and good luck, Judy. Mike Pollan, thanks for coming tonight. Did you wish to speak at all?
Not at all.
Not at all? We'd like to pay you per word then. Thanks for coming. Mr. Petya, complete streets, does that mean pavement or gutters or what's this all about?
It means all sorts of things.
What's that mean?
I just wanted to take a moment to give City Council just a quick update. The packet has a very detailed council communication, including a preliminary outline as far as what the study is going to be looking at. But as members of council and the community may or may not recall, the city was very fortunate in being awarded a technical services grant. This grant did not provide us with a dollar amount, but what it did provide us with was the assistance of primarily two folks. Michael Woods, a regional planner, and Matt Skiles, a regional transportation planner from the Northwest Council Governments to essentially help put together the pieces of a complete streets program. A complete streets program takes into consideration basically everything. Everything from sidewalks, bike lanes, trails, interconnectivity between those attributes in your community. It's a tool that the state is basically advising that we need to have in order to qualify for grants in the future. Now, that edict has not yet come down quite like that, but it is, if you will, the, the word on the street that eventually it's going to be a criteria or at least help people or help communities get additional points when, when applying for, for various grants. And so we are essentially at the cusp of beginning this process. I just wanted to give the City Council a heads up so that when eventually it does come here and we have discussions, it's not something that you're hearing for the first time. It's really encourage, encourage folks to call if they have questions about it. But basically, we're putting together a group of people that are going to be representational from the COG, from MDOT, from the Pioneering Healthy Communities Group. Councilmember Spelman attended a meeting already on that, representing that group. We had Dan Smith, a director from the YMCA, a part of it. And we'll be looking at basically the outline, you know, what, what are complete streets? How does it reflect the grand vision and community growth grants that are, that are part of this thing? You know, part of the introduction, you can see there'll be some examples of what complete streets are, what incomplete streets are. This is all going to be a part of the book, if you will, that we'll have at the end of the process. It goes, you know, just to read some of the headings, section two of it will presumably be the benefits, ranging from economic development to placemaking to encouraging healthy lifestyles. There'll be a public input process as part of this whole thing. Again, I'm giving everyone, if you will, the public heads up that this is coming tonight. And then section four really gets into all of the different, different pieces of the, of the study, so.
Okay. That's it. Thanks for that background. Anybody with any questions or comments on complete streets that we'd like to hear or you'd like to share? Hearing none. Marcus, I'm going to ask you to move on down. Looks like Hershey and Lynn Street over by the hospital.
Yes.
Add some action.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, we have a request for a change order with respect to the Hershey and Lynn Street construction project. After the project was completed and actual quantities and changes were known, there is a cost increase of just over 4% from the original estimated costs of the project. The city did award this project back on June 4th, 2012 to Dunbar Excavating in an amount of $344,332.50. And the recommended action this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is to approve the change order for $13,992.92 for the Hershey and Lynn Street construction project. Funds are available in our local street fund, Special Assessment Capital Projects Fund and the Water and Sewer Fund to cover, to cover this cost. Bruce Dewitt is here this evening if there's any specific questions on the project itself. But again, similar, we've had a similar situation in the past where once the project is done and the actual quantities are known, from time to time, we have to come back and ask for a change order based on what the estimate was.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Petya. Mr. Dewitt, I'm going to refer to you twice in one meeting. I hope that's a good thing. And could you, do you have anything you wish to share with us or add to what Marcus has done so far?
Most of them were just, a lot of them were quantity, you know, we estimate quantities before we go in. Sometimes they come in over and under. Sometimes like the DQ will require, we've got an extra hydrant in there, they require that after we bid it and we got the permit. So it's a little bit of a, just getting the final numbers together and paying a little over.
Thank you. I haven't seen the Hershey Lynn Street. The Carmel thing is still holding up quite well. It is really a nice work. I've lived up there too long and three addresses on Stimson, Stimson's falling to pieces. But the new roads that we have that have been done recently are amazing and I'd ask the citizens to get out and drive by Hershey and Lynn Street to see what nice changes are there as well. We're on a pretty good streak with our contractors that we've had, I've noticed. With that, could we have a motion or is there any other discussion regarding changing the order here for Hershey and Lynn Street as it's turned out?
I just had a question and you may not know the answer to this. Again, we'll refer to Mr. Dewitt for the third time tonight, but if I recall this, because I remember when we were bidding this out, this was quite a bit under the budgeted amount. So even with this change order, we would still be under the budgeted amount for the project? Thank you.
Anybody else with any questions? Or comments? Hearing none. Could we have a motion to approve the change order?
I will make the motion to approve the Hershey Lynn Street construction change order request for $13,992.92.
Support.
There's a motion and support. Any further or any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. And does that conclude your matters with regard to your City Manager's Report, Mr. Petya?
That does.
Next up would be the introduction of ordinances and resolutions and we have a couple of those here. And these, it looks like these would just be to set public hearings. Marcus, what are these, one at a time?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As discussed earlier this evening in our work session, this first item is a request to set a public hearing and a motion being requested for a resolution to set a public hearing for December 17th to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend section 12-19 of the Cadillac City Code. Your packet does have a strike-through version in it showing the current code as it's written along with the recommended changes. And again, the action tonight is simply to set a public hearing.
Thank you very much, Marcus. Council, how would you like to work through this?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to set a public hearing for December 17th to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend section 12-19 of the Cadillac City Code.
Okay. This would be to put it in front of the public and have the public hearing on the 17th of December. Support. And there's a support.
I just feel that this is the best way to approach this is to start with the public hearing.
Okay. And supporting this is the amendment adding low income to the already in place categories of elderly and handicapped?
Yeah, for the public's information, this is, you know, something that we came across. We don't really understand why low income wasn't part of this in the first place, why it was excluded so many years ago. So we don't have any of that history apparently. So we're taking a look at amending the ordinance to allow for it.
There's a motion and support. Any further discussion? Or not? Chris, could we please have a roll call vote on this?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. That does pass. Marcus, looks like you have another ordinance to introduce or at least to have us consider setting it for a public hearing.
Yes. The next item would be a request to set another public hearing for December 17th, 2012 to consider an ordinance amending a section of the city code that would provide for a service charge in lieu of taxes for dwelling units for low to moderate income persons.
Okay.
And again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you all know, this was discussed in our work session before and is related to what Councilmember Spelman had just mentioned.
Do you want to flesh that out at all for everyone that's watching?
Sure.
To maybe repeat the background that was given to us and...
This is an ordinance that would amend a section of our code that would allow for low-income housing specifically for a current multifamily unit Cadillac shores. It's already a housing facility in Cadillac. This would provide the First Housing Corporation, the owner of the property, the opportunity to reinvest several million dollars in the, in the project by paying a fee to the city in lieu of property taxes, which under law, under the state of Michigan, they're allowed to ask for.
This would not add any more units.
That is correct. This would not add any more units.
Any discussion on this anymore?
I'm trying to remember, we are, we're putting this on the same agenda. Was there a timing issue that put those together?
You would not necessarily be able to move this one forward unless you're also willing to move the other ordinance amendment forward. And so given that the City Council did, did approve setting the public hearing for that one, it would make sense to set the public hearing for this one and to continue to move both items in tandem together. Or if the council so wishes at a later point in time, such as in the next meeting in December, not to move them forward, then you would have that option as well not to approve anything.
So we...
So we were, apparently, there's not a problem if the one ordinance takes 20 days to be in effect, we can still approve the other one prior to that ordinance being approved? That's not an issue?
I'm not sure. Is that an issue? No, I don't think so.
No, because we altered the effective date of the second one to make sure that the amendment to the ordinance became effective before the ordinance granting a pilot, if council wants to do that, would become effective.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion on the table at this point, Chris?
There is not.
I have a question. So this isn't specific to this particular request. It's just allowing us to be able to do this in general.
The first one is?
No, the second one, too.
No.
Okay. Let's, one question at a time. What, can you answer a question, Marcus?
The first one was not specific.
Well, the way the second one is written looks like, to me, like it's not specific.
No, it is. Page two lays out First Housing Corporation, Cadillac Shore, townhouses, and gets into the definitions thereof, so it is...
It's just the wording is not in the motion.
Oh, okay. Right.
It just looked very general to me.
Yeah. The language for the motion is general, didn't need to be specific, but the...
But it references this particular...
Yes.
Resolution. Okay.
And is this, and I apologize for asking this, does this ordinance give the percentage or that's deemed at a later date?
The answer is yes and yes. The ordinance does give the percentage that is being requested. However, as we discussed in our work session, our recommendation, if the City Council so chooses to move this forward later this month, would be to make it at 10%, not at the lower rate.
The lower rate is...
8.6%.
And that's in the ordinance.
And that, right.
Yes, Section 1280.
Thank you. I was looking for...
All right. Could we, barring any further discussion, is there a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to set a public hearing for December 17th, 2012, to consider an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Cadillac to provide for a service charge in lieu of taxes for dwelling units for low to moderate income persons. Yes.
Motion and support. I guess another question, we were going to crunch numbers. I don't know that we had any crunched numbers tonight at the closed session that I was expecting. Are we to balance and look at this overall? Is there a way to look at what... Mr. Roberts, you're looking at me. You have an answer?
Yeah, I can include stuff like that in the packet, and it'll just be based on estimates and things. So we'll show you some of the potential impacts of the pilot.
So you don't feel that that motion is too general? I mean, there's nothing specific about it.
No, because the motion itself, well, when we get that far, the motion itself...
Well, Mike's looking. I was going to mention that...
Could be for any service charge, for any low income.
Because it doesn't have a, it doesn't have an ordinance number either, is the...
It doesn't, right.
The resolution introducing and setting the public hearing is simply setting the public hearing and introducing the ordinance attached as Exhibit A. So that ordinance number is left blank because we don't have one yet, but it's attached as, to the resolution, saying, "This is the ordinance that you're going to consider as part of your public hearing," which includes all of the 12-77 through 1286.
Okay.
Which are code sections.
All right.
So that includes also the establishment of the annual service charge under 1280, and we left it in there as opposed to 8.6% of the annual shelter rent.
Which can change.
Okay. Any further questions? I believe we have a motion and support on the table in a second. Barring any further outburst, I'm going to go ahead with the vote. Anyone else from council?
So when we have the public hearing to consider this, I'm sorry, it's, I'm being as thick as a brick, but when do we deal with the details about the percentage?
You can, you can deal with the details any time after the public hearing, because what you'll do is receive input from the public, then you'll have a discussion, including whether or not to...
So the exact details don't need to be noticed thus far in advance?
No. I mean, they're in there to the extent that we had an idea of what the request was, but then you can alter some of those things, like the percentage, the duration, those types of issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallmeyer. Anybody else? That wasn't much of an outburst, but we'll take it. Anything else from anyone? Good job. And with that, Chris, could you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Motion carried. Got a couple bits of movement there. I'd like to invite the public to come and join us in those discussions. Will they write us letters? I assume they could do that, Marcus, as well?
Absolutely.
Marcus, we're down to adoption of ordinances and resolutions. What do you have for us?
I do have one this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a request to approve an easement agreement with Mr. Don Boersma for Phase One of sewer-related construction on Mr. Boersma's property. This is an item that council has discussed on several occasions publicly. It is in our budget as a part of our CIP plan. This is a phase that the city did provide an update. Jeff, was it about a month and a half ago, I think? Maybe two months ago?
Yeah.
With respect to moving forward and getting, getting the infrastructure in the ground in advance of this spring, or by this spring. Our deadline, I believe, is May, and we are aiming to have it finished by April. And again, this evening, we do have the easement agreement in place, approved by Mr. Boersma, and we do now need council approval as well to move forward.
Who would like to move forward with this?
I would make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented that gives permission for the signing of an easement with Don Boersma.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion and support. Anything else from council? Hearing none? Nothing? Nada? Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next up, our minutes of boards and commissions. Marcus, I noticed some of our boards that we do have, we don't have those. Is there a reason we don't cover those? I know tonight, we just have the Housing Commission from March through October, which is a little late, but, and also the Planning Commission minutes from September 24th. I see John Putvin is in the House tonight, so he's all over those minutes. Is there anything in the minutes that we have, first of all, that are noteworthy for council?
I just wanted to mention, and, Mr. Mayor, I know as being a member of the Planning Commission, you know that the off-premise signage item is something that's continuing to be discussed. Joey Adams, our Development Director, had mentioned perhaps the Planning Commission and the City Council get together at some point in the future and do a joint meeting to discuss the item. I'm not quite sure what the timing of that might be, but I just thought it'd be for the benefit of the group to mention, so.
Okay. We have a lot of other committees, though, Marcus. I'm just curious, the housekeeping of the minutes and boards of commissions, any reason why those aren't included?
Which ones?
Historically, and this started way before you came on board, but...
If you could just...
Brownfield would be one.
No, they meet very irregularly, once or twice a year, perhaps at most, and we can certainly, when they do meet and approve minutes, bring them forward to council. It shouldn't be an issue. So the ones that I think come forward are the groups that meet on more of a regular basis, on a monthly basis. So, but there's certainly nothing...
I like the development.
Okay.
LDFA, you got quite a few randoms.
Would staff mind taking a peek at all the list of things that we have? Maybe council could hone in on what they'd like to see on a periodic basis. Just as to what the list of the committees, I'm sure we have them in booklet anyway, but I just noted we see the same ones, which is fine, but are there others that we're not seeing? And I was just wondering why they, and you've indicated they don't meet that often.
Right. LDFA, again, perhaps once, once or twice a year.
Okay.
Brownfield redevelopment, again, they meet on as-needed type basis, but there's certainly nothing, nothing being cut back. In fact, we had even talked at one point about not putting minutes in our packets and just simply providing an online opportunity, because sometimes the packets get so thick, and we do have them all there. But we've continued to keep them in here as best we can.
Well, that would be a nice clearinghouse for the citizens to come online and go through the packet and see all the minutes in one place, or to have another location. Did I miss something?
Yes, but it's...
It's not worth repeating?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So I'm always willing to learn.
It's just a joke about adding another, adding another agenda item.
Well, it looks like we have space. There's a little white on the page. We're up to public comments with that. Thank you, everyone, for coming to the meeting that made it this far. I see, I did announce that our chairman of our board from the Cadillac Planning Commission is checking us out tonight, and I assume he has an artist reason for being here, but no, just here? That's good. Thank you for coming. He handles the gavel for the Planning Commission and has, for what, 10 years? Eight? Six?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? I got it. Thank you. So we're going to have to bring you an award, too. We're going to get a proclamation if...
I'm going to have to do a proclamation.
Careful.
I feel a proclamation if I'm...
Hey, we feel one coming on.
Chris?
Did you want to share anything with us tonight, John?
Wonderful job. You like that side better, don't you?
We had a whole team here.
This is the more popular side tonight of the audience over there.
All right. I'm not going to... If you line right up, we can't see all of you. That's not necessarily bad sometimes. All right. Just kidding. No more, any other public comments? Harry, good to see you back up front. Sorry they took your seat in the back tonight. There's no quiet exit for you.
I know. I kept looking and looking and looking for him. It's right up front.
All right. I'm going to close public comments. We don't have any tabled items. Go to the order, starting with councilmember Shippers.
Oh, sweet. I would just like to say that it was a pleasure this evening to hear from the, and honor the Vikings, the Lady Vikings volleyball team. There's something about sports and young women that keeps them in a world where we get, as young women, well, when I was, a long time ago, you get so many messages about who you are supposed to be, how you're supposed to look, what you're, how you're supposed to act. And what sports for young women does is keeps them focused in a direction that benefits not only them greatly, but society as a whole greatly. So I commend them, their coaches, and everybody else that volunteers with that. And also, the spotlight on the arts. That is something that really, really does benefit a community. So tonight, we had a double whammy of two things that really benefit our community, and it makes me very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. I meant to say Commissioner, Councilmember Spelman, sometimes she's like a commissioner, too.
Well, you surprised her.
I surprised her.
Oh, I got to go first. I never go first. I was a third in 10. I never...
I didn't use the word skipper's tonight.
Skipper's.
I agree with councilmember Shippers' comments about young women in sports. It is a great thing, and, you know, if it weren't for Title IX, we wouldn't be seeing this. When I was in high school, I didn't have that opportunity. Volleyball's one of my favorite sports, personally. I was at that quarterfinals game, too, and it was great. It was a, it was quite something to see, and I'm sure all of these gals are scholar athletes as well. And it's wonderful to see them focused on all of that good stuff. And to be kids, just to play, it's a great thing to do. I'm also really looking forward to us moving forward with the Complete Streets planning. I really like that concept. I hope we're doing it for all the right reasons, not just so that we can avail ourselves to grant dollars, because it's a great thing to do, to make room for bicycles and other forms of transportation, and the roads that we build and the roads that we use.
Thank you. Councilmember Malama?
I'd also like to congratulate the soccer team, and also, I agree wholeheartedly with my two councilmembers on females in sports. Back in my day, when dinosaurs roamed the earth, girls just sat in the stands and cheered for the boys. And in my 34 years in education, I see that as a real positive thing. It allows them to be thinking of other things besides their social calendar, and it's, it allows them to get a team concept, and I just think that's probably one of the best things that has come along in education. Second thing is, I agree wholeheartedly. I think the townships, I'd love to see the townships help us, and the art festival, it benefits the whole community. And if you believe in an area concept, I definitely, definitely feel that, that's warranted. And the other thing is, I'd like to have people take a look at the park and the lakefront with the lights. They look beautiful. Coming into meeting tonight, they were all on, and it really looks pretty in the background of the lake.
Thank you. Good comments so far from all of us. Now, councilmember Stevens, also known as Mayor Proctown, you going to raise the bar?
I don't know, but I, I did want to, before I add on to whatever each of you said, Mr. Putvin being in the crowd, and I know you don't always get a chance to attend our volunteer luncheons, but it's a chance to tell you thank you. The hidden part of our community is the volunteers that, like yourself, that are giving to the community in this way, and you don't always get recognized for it. So thanks for coming tonight. I know that wasn't why you came, but appreciate you being here. And I appreciate the mayor doing this with a volleyball team and recognizing it. I don't know, you guys are probably in agreement. This is tonight, I almost wanted to speak out of turn while the girls were still here, you know, to just say to them, "Thank you." And a quick story, I was in West Branch early November, actually, it was a council night. I was over there that day, and was at an event, and the comment was made that they were commenting about how professional the girls volleyball team was when Ogama Heights played them. And it really hit me that one thing I don't think we recognize as much, and I wish that they could hear, not just them, but all the students, some of the only, what people will know about Cadillac is the sports teams. And when you hear about how well they are represented, when the competitors can actually compliment them on, and not just the abilities of playing, but how they present themselves, that's a, that's an awesome part for, for our community. And they're, they're a tie. I don't know if you noticed, all of them have a tie with the mayor, and I, I give him credit in volleyball, basketball, football, he's, he's part of those programs. And it is a great tie. Hockey, all of them, and it's a part of our community, but they don't always know the part that they're representing, and we hear that all the time, not just from volleyball, of how well our students are representing us, and we should be giving them a thank you as well for how well they're doing, as well as the parents. So, and again, thanks, Mayor, for, I know you... So, and again, thanks, Mayor, for, I know you spend a lot of time on the sports as well as WATT announcing their games.
Thank you. And I get criticized for spending too much time doing other things, which is the inverse of micromanaging, last time I checked.
Yes.
You can't win in politics, and that's another example. Speaking of, Marcus, what do you have for us tonight?
Just frankly, a couple of quick things first. I must apologize. I need council to consider setting a special session in advance of our next meeting. The city administration and the fire department have finally come to what we believe are good terms with respect to our IAFF collective bargaining agreement. There are some deadlines, and we're getting this in just under the radar with respect to the state of Michigan and the need to get it in before the end of the calendar year. This will be our last regularly scheduled meeting, and it is important that we have the city council consider this prior to the end of the year. And so I'd suggest perhaps a 5:40, maybe another 5:45 start for a special session. To go into a closed session.
Is everyone planning on coming on the 17th? It sounds like we need three votes, for sure.
Do you need three?
Anybody? Okay, what else, Marcus? The personal property tax, I'm going to hit you up on that.
I'm sorry, do we need to set it?
You could.
Okay, let's do that. Well, thank you, Councilmember Stevens. Mayor Protem, why don't you go ahead and make your motion if you are on that track?
Could you repeat, the closed session would be for...
Would be for the purposes of discussing the collective bargaining agreement with the IAFF.
Okay. Looks like everybody's okay on the time. I'd like to make a motion that we set a special meeting for a closed session on December 17th at 5:45 PM to discuss the collective bargaining agreement with the IAFF.
All right, there's a motion.
Support.
There's support. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, Chris, if not?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Personal property tax, do you mind commenting on what's happening and what discussions maybe could help our city?
That's actually the second and last item I was going to mention. I am planning on going to the House hearing tomorrow in Lansing. The State House is going to be meeting tomorrow and Wednesday in Lansing to discuss this very important issue. Long story short, the state of Michigan is considering the removal of the industrial personal property tax. This is a personal property tax that only impacts industrial sites. This does not impact residential property at all. Why it's very important to Cadillac, Cadillac has a very robust manufacturing and industrial sector, the loss of this tax without replacement could equate to about, oh, what was it, $800,000, I believe? So it's a...
That's just city dollars.
Right, that's just city dollars, and that's a very significant, significant number. The state does have some legislation that's pending that refers to an 80% level in which it would be reimbursed. However, there are a number of unknown factors. One, you have to qualify. I'm assuming that we would qualify, but it's never safe to assume anything. But two, there's still then a 20% hit. Then the second part of that is the police and fire and ambulance component, for us to be primarily police and fire, is up to the local government to replace, and we are allowed to replace that at 100%. But the ability of replacing that is by putting in a special assessment, not on our residents, again, but putting in a special assessment only on our industrial parcels. And so there's a lot of chatter about how this really does help industry, because, you know, industry, while they'll be getting a major break, will then likely have to give a good portion of that back through the various special assessments that local communities across the state are going to have no choice but to put in to make up the loss of revenue. The other major issue is, why is this happening now? There is a push to actually get the state to approve this within three days, essentially. And the call that the Michigan Municipal League, as well as myself and other colleagues, are making are to say, you know, not to stall the process out, but to slow it down, go through a diligent process, a diligent manner of evaluating and analyzing, truly understanding what the local impacts would be before putting in place this new legislation and essentially rewriting the tax code in less than a week. So that's where that issue's at, a lot of unknowns, and I wish I had better answers or better information.
So basically, lame duck session, or...
Yes.
Some of the representatives or senators may not be coming back. Is that part of the feel you're getting from why it's happening now after the election?
That, and promises perhaps that may have been made to industry as a part of the election process about having this as an agenda item before the end of the year.
Who's our point person, Marcus? Has we been asked to come down? Are we working with the other business groups in the state?
I'm working with the Michigan Municipal League. They've asked for support and for attendance from local communities to be at the hearings. I have reached out, and so has our Finance Director, to both our state senator and our representative. I've also sent a copy of the correspondence that I sent to council, sort of identifying some of the issues, to other major leaders in our community, including the Superintendent of CAPS, the College President of Baker, since this will have an impact on schools as well. Also sent it to the Chamber of Commerce and to both the head of the Cadillac Industrial Group and the Cadillac Industrial Fund. And I know that Councilmember Malama, who's the President of KAMA, could also share that with Cadillac Air Manufacturers Association accordingly.
Is our message for them just to do nothing right now and take this up next year, install this process down, or do we have a solution to...
There is no solution at this point. The general message is to just try to slow the process down and to work together with the state and try and understand how to best solve these issues over the course of the next year or so, but not to just try to rewrite the code during the lame duck session.
Okay. I'm surprised they've taken it up right now. It looked like for sure it'd be coming up next year, once things, the dust settled, so to speak, with the outgoing and so forth.
Has the Michigan Municipal League switched their status from neutral to something else?
They have not sent an alert that says that their status has changed, but their status has changed. So their status originally was one of opposition. It then changed to neutral several months ago, when the state, through various Senate hearings, had essentially worked with them and negotiated to some amicable terms with respect to the replacement monies, and then now that what has come out has come out, where it looks like it's not only not going to be guaranteed, but they want to remove the tax and then perhaps ask for a statewide vote with respect to even allowing any of the replacements. So they, you know, the worst-case scenario is that everything gets removed, and then the state fails to approve through a statewide referendum, replacement of any of the dollars, and then everyone is kind of left out. So at this point, the league is not neutral any longer, and they are trying to help get the word out that, yes, something needs to change, but let's not rush through it during this week. Let's do it when there's time to do it in a more diligent manner, so.
First action that the Municipal League did is, that was before the election, and now we're dealing with after the election.
Right.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Petcher?
None at this time.
All right. I'd like to thank council for bearing with us tonight. We had a little community spotlight in the young ladies. I think that was appreciated by them very much. Also, Michelle Brynes, who has a landmark of exceeding 500 wins, and I don't know that a lot of people knew that, other than the readers of the Cadillac News, Mark View, and the folks that have been doing a good job supporting them and getting the message out. So thanks for doing that. Marcus, the staff helped on that as well.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Stevens had popped the idea up at one point. I also noted that Lake City recently has their council, and that was the last straw when I had been thinking of doing this for years, but these young ladies were the ones that at least put me over the top. And I just want to thank staff for letting them in the chambers and giving them a warm reception. I probably should have let each of you say a few things, but I appreciate you coming up front and standing with me as we hand out and give them, hopefully, long-term memories of their success and a show of appreciation for what it was, a great team and a group of great teamwork that made some magic. That, also, in the arts, it's interesting to hear. We have continued our funding at a very stable level, and lots happen in 21 years. You would think it would go up. We've given more to TV '97 and '98 over the years and increased their funding, which is kind of in the same area in some ways, giving the public some service. And I think they've provided a worthy service and could deserve more funding if possible. This is certainly a council that has a soft heart for the arts. You've demonstrated that by donating to Jazz in the Park recently, and probably in the future. With that, I would like to thank, by the way, the unsung hero who sits at the end and seems to bail us out once in a while with good advice. Yes. Positive remark being made about an attorney, sorry about that, but...
I heard you were talking about Marcus.
Yeah, good one. You've done a great job since you've been on board. I particularly want to thank you for the work you've done for our employees and the group of employees that are most affected by what happens in this city. So thank you, Mike, and I appreciate that very much. With that, barring any other or any outbursts, I'm teasing, feel free always to talk, by the way. That's going to do it for our meeting tonight. Thank you, staff, for coming tonight and bearing with us, and the folks in the corner that get the award for staying the longest. Thanks for coming. Magic words, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.